To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. May be seated. Welcome to tonight's meeting. It's so good to have you all here for the June 28th meeting. First item on the agenda relates to citizen concerns. Is there anyone who is a concerned citizen? If you would approach the podium, state your name and address and the nature of your concern.
My name is Karen Mackey. My address is 214 Vista Court, Sioux City, Iowa.
And the nature of your concern, ma'am?
I am just providing some follow-up to Mr. Ung's comments last week. I will try to be very brief.
And that's fine. I just want to give one parameter. Last week, we spent about thirty-two minutes on the topic, so we will hear any one statement against or for this particular topic. And with that, ma'am, you may have the floor.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Ung, I provided you with the letter as well as copies to your colleagues. I'm not going to read the letter. I just have a very short statement to make. It can be very difficult to hold public office. And to be a servant leader, you do have to have very thick skin. I imagine that your fellow supervisors have experienced, you know, some very difficult things, far worse than being called an idiot. And, you know, it's probably likely it's been on a regular basis. That's unfortunately the nature of what you do. You regularly get feedback that you don't always appreciate. And while I appreciate that you want your constituents to treat you with respect, it is a two-way street, sir. When someone says that you've offended them, it's important to listen to them. The social convention is to apologize, not to accuse them of bullying you because they tell you that you have offended them. If you asked your fellow supervisors, I imagine each one of them has apologized for things they may not at the time have thought they did wrong. They apologized because it was the right thing to do once they realized that they had offended someone. It's not about lacking conviction. It's about being humble enough to apologize when needed. I understand that you feel that Sulan Pride Alliance members were rude to you online. As I state in my letter, of the thirteen comments that you spoke about last week, I was only able to locate seven of them, and they were of the more, less egregious nature. They were made by four individuals, none of whom in any way is affiliated with our organization. However, because the comments were made on the Sulan Pride Alliance Facebook page, I want to sincerely apologize to you on behalf of the organization. Thank you for your time. I will continue to pray for you, sir, and for all of you. Thank you very much, and continue the good work.
Thank you very much. Any other citizen concerns that, not of this topic nor appear on the agenda?
No.
Ma'am, if you'd approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sharon Joan Susie. My address is 2909 Myrtle Street, Sioux City, Iowa. This is regarding a conversation that I had with a fellow colleague of yours, and I'm going to play the tape. This is a short version of the tape. And I think that, in all fairness to me, you have a right to hear it. I've tried to have somebody pay attention to me, starting three years ago, and no one would, about 2850 Malloy Road. It's not a surprise to anybody that's on the board at the time of review, it's not a surprise I lost my arm that year and was in a hospital recovering from a coma. But here's the recording. Please listen. Very disappointed in the establishment. Plateau here where I don't have to keep doing this.
Ain't gonna happen. You're gonna do this year after year after year after year. It's gonna go on forever.
Is that for everybody or just me?
Well, it's for anybody that appeals their value, gets adjustment from the board review, and we think the board review result is wrong. We think the value's higher.
You think it's higher?
Yeah.
What, how did you determine the three tier? I've never asked you this.
I'm not gonna go through this with you, Susan Sharon. I'm not gonna do this. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give you thirty minutes of my time to go through what I've gone through a hundred times.
But you never explained to me how you did it.
Not important, not important how I did it. What's important is that you appealed it, that they gave you a value.
Ma'am, for the sake of time.
Two, less than two minutes. You've only got like forty seconds left.
All right, I'm just worried that you won't have time to.
I know what you're trying to do, and it ain't gonna happen here.
This is important.
I understand that, ma'am. Just don't want you to use all the time.
Officially become uncooperative. And because I'm asking you questions, not the taxpayer here, I'm asking you questions that you're not cooperative with me. You want me to like stop? Is this personal or business?
It's up to you. I just want to give you the last thirty seconds.
A little bit of both, personal. Well, you know, that's the sad part about this, is because, I mean, all I want to do is ensure the property to the best use that I can use.
What you wanted, you want to get property tax, that's what you're possibly here, without regard for property insurance, that's the law of the law.
Okay.
I'm not playing.
But you're using one of the national laws, and you have it out here, you said.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Wait a minute. Your guys are next. Listen.
You've been before every, if I can, there is a, or the city council, or the, or the board of county commissioners, you've been to the property assessment appeal board, you've been to the board of review, you've been everywhere you can go, and no place left for you to go.
I'm asking questions.
All right, your, your time to speak.
I'm here today only because I feel that it's time to address this situation, and I feel I've been unfairly treated as a property owner. This property, I would love to discuss this. I did not want to do this here. I wanted to do it. I asked Rhonda Capron for you and you, Mr. Ung, and the mayor and her to do this, and not on everybody else's time here. And I was totally given no latitude, so that's where I'm at. You tell me what you want me to do now.
I understand that there's a process in front of the board of review in order to file an appeal on your assessments. I understand that you are not happy with the assessor, and you have stated that complaint in front of our board. We have heard that now under citizen concerns, and we appreciate your comments. We have no other recourse for you at this time, other than through the board of review.
This is not about them. We misunderstood this. This is about the way I have been treated as a property tax owner. It's not about the assessment anymore. It's not about that. It's about a colleague of yours acting in a non-professional manner and using his position. It doesn't matter what the board of review, they just throw out numbers. It doesn't matter. He feels that they're higher than, you know, that it's more than what you guys give, you know, the numbers. It's not about that. Sir, it's about your colleagues and the way I was treated, and that's why I'm here, to sit by and say, I don't want to be an angry individual property owner. I own three properties in this town, and it's a disappointment. I regret being in the city limits and even being a part of this. I lived here since the sixties. And to be sixty-five years old, sixty-seven, and lose my arm, and try to explain this to you people, and no one would listen, and this is what I have. I appreciate you taking this time. I'm gonna sit down and listen, but if anybody wants to talk with me, I have nine and a half minutes. This is just two and a half, almost three. And the other, the others are just as bad.
Thank you very much. Are there any other concerns that should come before this board before we adopt our agenda? Hearing none, I'd move approval of the agenda dated 28 June of 2016.
Move it.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the agenda is adopted five to zero. Next item on the agenda is approval of the June 21st, 2016, meeting minutes.
So moved.
All seconded them, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the minutes are approved, five to zero. Item number five is discussion and approval of the claims.
Move it. Second.
There's a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the claims are approved, five to zero. Item number six is a presentation of resolution thanking and commending years of service to Mark Peterson, Woodbury County Conservation Department. Would you approach the podium, sir, and I'd like to read this? Says Mark Peterson, "Whereas Mark Peterson has capably served Woodbury County as an employee of the Woodbury County Conservation Department for twenty-six years, from July 1, 1990 to June 30, 2016, and whereas the service given by Mark Peterson as a Woodbury County employee has been characterized by his dedication to the best interests of the citizens of Woodbury County, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors, Woodbury County, Iowa, the undersigning members of this board thank and commend Mark Peterson for his years of service to Woodbury County." Thank you very much for having been a part of the county and giving your years of service to an excellent conservation department.
Let's have him come around here and so. (APPLAUSE).
We're supposed to take a picture now. We spoke about the conservation department last night in Odo, in one of our rural town meetings, and one of the problems that we established with the conservation cabins is that they're so full, and that's a good problem to have. So, thank you so much for, for all your work out there in conservation. Item number seven is a good news report, and John Malloy and John Brandt, the two Johns from the IT department, are up first on our senior system analyst being a double gold medal winner at the Iowa Senior Games Track and Field. Do you want to give us a little bit of background on this?
Yes, Chairman, as part of the good news report, and I figured this ties into Blue Zones, healthy, healthy living, and excellence, and I'll sort of tie this together. Blue Zones Initiative, I see John Brandt exercising those, those basic tenants of that, those principles through, through his daily living and his, his lifestyle. I also learned about his, his father, Arnie Brandt, the late Arnie Brandt, back in the nineties, he was a prolific senior games athlete, and he left quite a legend in the wrestling community and just as setting a standard of excellence in what he did. And John has inspired me here in the last year or two as far as competing in track and field, and although I don't consider early fifty senior games.
Yes, don't look like seniors, just so you know.
Again, there was a ninety-two-year-old there that beat all the eighty-year-olds in the hundred-meter dash, so that was, that was pretty, pretty inspiring. Anyway, I've witnessed John demonstrate excellence in the workplace here the last nine years, and now I've got to witness it on the, on the oval at Milwaukee, Iowa. So, my congratulations to John.
Excellent job, John. The other thing I wanted to highlight, and thank you so much for that, is Danielle Dempster, who could not be with us tonight, our county veteran service director and officer, spoke alongside U.S. Senator Joni Ernst at a Veterans Roundtable on Friday, June 24th, and very proud of the, the presentation, that a very good turnout for that time of day, and Woodbury County having over ten thousand veterans and dispersing over thirty-six million dollars in benefits to those veterans is, is just an incredible thing. And over half of Iowa veterans are approaching retirement age and looking for health care and other needed benefits. And so, in order to meet that need, we did approve a service officer that is being added July 1st, and I thank the Veterans Affairs Commission for being here tonight, and if we could give a collective round of applause for those folks that serve, those who have served.[867.62][867.62](APPLAUSE). Appreciate it very much. It's always good to have some good news, and, and one of the things that I think is good that's before us tonight is the discussion of a funding commitment for the Ag Expo Center. This has been something that has, of course, been in the, the news as of late. We've had several due diligence meetings between the County Board of Supervisors, TSI in the Chamber, the Ag Expo Board, and the City of Sioux City. And so, very pleased tonight to have some different folks from those different entities with us, and would like to discuss a proposal that I have that I believe can ultimately move us forward. And then we will open up the floor to a discussion of this item, and we'll have a discussion amongst board members as to a funding commitment. This is a unique opportunity where Sioux City and Woodbury County stand ready for growth in an approximately seventy-million-dollar reinvestment district by which we can leverage real estate dollars from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. The 208E agreement ultimately is something that will be a cooperative document that we believe will be signed by various entities who want to be a part and partial of the day-to-day management of this entity. What I've put forward on the agenda tonight is, having seen the impact of this three-thousand-seat arena, warm-up facility, Stockyards, Hall of Fame, and additional exhibit space, that'll be part of a learning center with Western Iowa Tech Community College, and really something that will be the anchor for this reinvestment district, is that the county would participate with a contribution of 1.5 million dollars, and do so over a schedule of ten years' time through the use and coordination with both parties' legal counsel, and do so in order to, to make a funding commitment that is unparalleled on behalf of Woodbury County, but do so very responsibly on behalf of taxpayers. And what I've put forward is that this would be over ten years' time from gaming revenue, so it will not be a tax source of funds, that the county would not own or manage operational responsibility, and that it would be contingent upon some of the parameters, including Western Iowa Tech funding and their educational participation. The county would also offer a tax-exempt pass-through loan in order to help with the financing, and it's very important for taxpayers to understand this, has no ultimate obligation to taxpayers in future years. The county simply acts as a pass-through entity, this year up to 6.3 million dollars, and next year up to 3.7 million dollars. I believe the county has come to the table, and the county is willing to participate in a way that I think is really exercising our fiduciary responsibility, and is a very exciting endeavor. Annual earnings look to be between 1.49 and 1.92 million dollars annually. This will be an economic development engine that I believe will be something that'll be a driving force in years to come. That's what I've put on tonight's agenda, and have done so by way of taking the memorandum of understanding that was presented from the City of Sioux City and the Ag Expo Board before this board, and have only modified it with legal counsel to say that it's anticipated a 208E agreement will be drafted. The reason that that's done is, I do not know if it is the will of this board, nor would it be my personal opinion, that the County Board of Supervisors would be a part of the 208E agreement ultimately, that would operate this. But we would, or I would certainly put forward as a proposal tonight, that the county make a, a healthy participation in order to leverage those future dollars. With that, I have included as backup, a lot of the backup that you received from last week. We have the various entities represented tonight, and I also have crafted a letter of intent to the Ag Expo and Learning Center Board outlining the terms and conditions by which I believe the board could ultimately participate with what I've mentioned before. So with that, I'd like to open up the floor to anyone who is there from the various entities, the City of Sioux City, the Sulan Initiative and Chamber of Commerce, the Ag Expo and, and Learning Center Board, or anyone else who wishes to represent any of those entities, if there are any comments, and then we'll have a discussion as a board.
Well, they're, well, they're figuring out who's gonna talk. The pass-through money, we have done this for both hospitals, huge amounts of money, and Jackson Recovery only a couple of years ago, so it's a common thing that county does.
I'd just say, not everybody at once.
Well, Gene, would you please, I find it incomprehensible that we have our group here, and we have two of the most intelligent people in blue who have asked me to stand up here, which is the last person you people want to see up here, when you look at the group as a whole. This is a great moment, Jeremy, and I'll be honest with you, I've been in some form of government for thirty-eight years, in both local and, and as, and this is, I'm gonna tell you right now, the first time, from Aniluk County, to Neely, Nebraska, to Tilden, to Sioux City, that the two governing bodies of this great county are going to embark on a joint venture together with nothing but the best interest of the economy and the people in mind, and I want to thank you for that. That's real visionary, and it says a lot for everybody across the spectrum. And my involvement in this came as a result of Larry asking if I would help out with the Moville Group, and I did the best I could with that, but it takes resources to make it work, and it takes good shepherds of those resources and intelligent people to make these things work together. Thank you so much for your effort. I'm quite sure that your offer will be accepted by all entities involved, and will work diligently on the 208E agreement in the different subsections in order to bring to fruition the kinds of parameters that you set forth in your trust for this million and a half-plus opportunity for the pass-through loan as well. So I want to commend you all. It's not easy doing what you do, and when you do something well, you should know it and understand it's appreciated by an awful lot of entities across the spectrum, and it's not only just Woodbury County, but it's gonna affect the four or five county area in the state, in a multi-state region, and Des Moines will thank you for it. This is the project, that I understand the IDED board subtly said was the most unique in the state of Iowa, another arena in Corvallis, not denigrating it, good for them, that this was the keystone event that they'd like to see this, these tax increment history monies go towards. And so, you've also re-echoed or reinforced that as well. Gene, would you like to say a few words, please?
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Just to all of you, thank you again. I, I'm impressed how everybody's come together and supported this project, and I can't thank you enough. It's, we wouldn't do it, we couldn't do it, without the state, you, Murd, the county, everybody. This is, this is a great project. I think it'll be good for the area. I think it'll be, if we do it right, we'll have lots of action, lots of people. I think we'll get the hundred and twenty-five, the hundred and fifty thousand guests into town we're talking about, and I believe it'll be a real success. So with that, I'd just like to say again, thanks to all of you, and thanks for the pass-through thought. I think, I mean, that, that's a great gesture, plus the dollars. So, thanks to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
I also think, if I may, that as a board, we owe our thanks also to the, to the private investors that have stepped up, really gone above and beyond in what they've been pledging. I've heard it said many times that the, you know, once the, you know, public sector makes a stand and sets an example, that the private sector will follow, and I think we're all gonna be surprised by the support in the community for this project, because I don't think it's just an economic development initiative, but it's also, you know, quality of life, and cleans up the entrance to Sioux City, which is priceless. So, thank you.
And to that, I'll say, thank you, and we are going to work hard to get to everyone. Give them a chance to donate and give and be part of the project, so.
Thanks, Gene.
Just reiterate our thank you, on behalf of the city, thank you for your support, and I think it's a unique project, as has been already said a number of times, celebrate our, our heritage and who we are, and allow us to look forward to the future at the same time. So, thank all of you, and we're, this is just another step on the number of steps that we have to take to, to make this work, but this will allow us to charge ahead and raise the additional funds and go back to the state with a project that they can approve and move forward. So, again, thank you very much.
You'll realize we haven't voted yet, right?
(LAUGHING).
No, I. Is there anyone else who would like to speak from any of the various entities? I'll open that up then to discussion of the supervisors.
We had a town hall meeting in Odo last night, and you can't help but reflect on the folks in that room. They're going to participate in this facility. It's all about agriculture, and just about everybody in this area is involved in agriculture one way or another, whether they're selling equipment or feeding the people that are selling equipment, or the farmers, or the tires, whatever it is. It really gets down to ag, and this is a real opportunity to showcase the ag in the area. We've got some good stuff going on here. The folks around this area grow a lot of crops. It's incredible. All you have to do is drive to Odo, and all you see is crops, period. So, I, I think this is a great, great, great project.
Thank you.
I think it's a wonderful project. I mean, I've been involved with these gentlemen, and it's a good group, for a number of years. I don't think we can fund it the way you're suggesting, though.
And why is that?
You talk about spending gaming revenue. Well, there isn't any. I mean, it's been spent.
This year, this fiscal year, correct?
Right, but if your first payment is July 1 of seventeen, you still don't have any money until September or October. You don't get paid ahead of time.
Right.
This should come out of local option sales tax, because it is economic development.
I absolutely disagree with you, and I'll tell you why. When we did a retooling of our Economic Development Department, for lack of a better term, we looked and we brought Rural Economic Development Committee together. It was comprised of two rural mayors, our Economic Development Director, as well as a couple of our supervisors. One of the things that we made very clear was that economic development dollars through local option sales tax would be used in our rural areas. That was something that we've heard time and time again. We have dedicated a hundred and ten thousand dollars, actually a hundred and forty thousand dollars now, to long-term planning for the Odos and Danberries and Cushions of the world. So with that said, I think it's very important that we follow through on that commitment. And so for that reason, I am absolutely confident that, you're right, and it would have to be after July 1st of this next year to be an FY18. That's understandable, but the, and we may have to have a moratorium on some of our equipment replacement, and I think our budget analyst has provided some of those details. But that's what you do, right? That's what you do in a budget. You say, this year, we're going to have to, we're not going to be able to do everything, so if we want to make this commitment, which we believe will ultimately grow the tax base and be an engine of economic development, we're going to have to take a year, maybe even two, and winnow down a little bit our, our equipment replacement from gaming revenue, but I think it's a perfect source of money. And one of the things that was said last night out in Odo was, why on my tax bill do I have to pay for this? That was one individual, and the response was, it won't bother your taxes at all, because we'll use it from a non-tax source, gaming revenue in this case, over a period of years, and I'll be financially responsible. And so with that, I would oppose using local option sales tax for this endeavor.
That's what local option sales tax is for. Gaming revenue, which, in order to balance the budget, has been spent, I wish our finance person was here, something like four hundred thousand dollars.
About three seventy-five.
So, you have, you're, you're not gonna have that money to spend to balance your budget, so you're gonna have to raise taxes in order, unless you're just gonna quit funding county operations.
I disagree.
You can just, you can disagree all you want.
Well, I want to tell you why, because I know you're interested in hearing why. The hundred, yes, you will have to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less for, in equipment replacement, but we've never spent the full fund balance anyway. We've left money there, and, and I think that that's perfectly reasonable. This board has set the last two years, the tax. This board has set, the last two years, the tax levy has gone down, in rural basic and in general basic. And because of that, I believe that we have also dedicated, out of the $130 million that's going to come in over the next 20 years with CF revenue, $55.9 million of which will come to the county, we've said one out of every $2 is going to go to property tax relief. Now, does that come in in about two years' time into play? Absolutely. So we are going to have to make some tough decisions in this next year. But there's nothing statutorily that makes us use gaming revenue for one particular use, and I think this is an excellent one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On using local option sales tax, I would agree with you and say we could, but we shouldn't, because I remember the letter that the board got from all the rural mayors after we retooled, as you put it, the Rural Economic Development Department, some of their incentive programs. And we basically heard and know uncertain terms at town halls and through letters like that, that the rural communities would be watching to see what we did with that money. I think if we, if we retool that pot of money and we dump it into Sioux City, I think that's a mistake. But I think that going the route of non-tax dollars not only keeps the county unencumbered in the future, but it's also sending a strong message that we're not going to play with tax, property tax dollars on speculations, no matter how foundational they may be, still it's an investment. And we want to look at this as running a responsible business. And that's what I think we're doing when we, if we were to, and I hope we do, fund this project. We are gaining these $13.9 million, these use-it-or-lose-it dollars that otherwise would not benefit our community and our city and our county.
Supervisor Smith?
I'll just finish up by saying I am going to support this project. I'm going to vote in favor of it. I do think, I wish you would have given just a little bit more thought to using the increment financing and let our bonding attorneys look at that, because that would not have spread out, I know you think it's not going to raise taxes. I, I'm going to be a little more honest in my own opinion, think it could directly raise taxes, because we have infused that gaming money into our general fund to reduce taxes. So when that is taken out, the likelihood, unless we're going to cut services or cut something, you know, taxes will go up. But with that said, I think this project is important enough. I am not going to kill it, because I don't agree with using gaming monies. I don't. But I believe in the project enough that if that's a consequence of what happens, then so be it. I would have preferred to use a different funding source and let our new business fund it. But if all the taxpayers have to kick it a little bit, so be it. I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the board, from citizens?
Is there any way to pass this motion without identifying a revenue stream?
No.
Why not?
Not in what I would move, because I want it to be very clear to taxpayers that this is not going to increase the tax levy. And what I would also say in...
Don't make that promise. I don't think you should make that promise.
Then otherwise...
I really don't. It's unfair to our taxpayers to make that promise.
I don't, I don't think it is, because it's a promise that's been honored on this board the last two budgets.
Because we've had increased revenue.
I disagree.
Not because we've cut our spending.
I think because we budgeted better. But here's the other, the other part of this.
Jeremy, you've spent, I don't, you know, I don't want these people sent through this. But all of the revenue that we've had has been spent down to the point where CF better come on pretty soon. And this is another case in point. Gaming revenue, which was used to fund various things over the years, we had the deal up in the courtroom. Gaming revenue could have been used to offset that, but it's been spent to balance, to balance the budget.
I wish it had been sent through that.
Now you're spending this to try and balance a budget, and the money's not there.
It is there.
Well, I wish our finance person was here.
I think he's given you a fairly descriptive recommendation of exactly what you have to do in order to put a one to two-year moratorium on the amount of equipment that you replace every year. And if you will do so, then we will, through a non-tax source, be able to make this investment. If you want to use local option sales tax, that has also been used in order to lower the property tax levy.
That's correct.
So you would be in the same bind.
No, because the money is there. It's not there in gaming revenue.
It is there, sir, because we're talking about future years.
The balance in that budget right now is maybe $35,000.
In FY '18? That's not true.
We haven't done '18 yet.
Exactly, that's the point. You can't say the money is not there in future years because we are on autopilot with equipment replacement. You can't say that the money is not there when you have projections from your budget analysts that say there will be over $400,000, and you say, well, I'm on autopilot, I spend the same amount of money every year. Say for a year or two. Can you not replace everything in whole on equipment? I say we can do that. And by the way, just so everybody knows, the way that this letter is written, to Supervisor Smith's point, says preferably from a schedule over a period of 10 years, the county may be open to the use and coordination with both parties' legal counsel of tax increment financing. Maybe. But if, there's a surety about the next 10 years and what's going to come in as far as our gaming revenues that has not been budgeted for, has not been allocated, has not been spent. I believe so, that we can do so responsibly in a way that continues to lower the property tax levy as we've done the last two years and will continue to do. And if we don't, I'll owe you a stake, Supervisor Smith.
And on that note, I think we have to remember in previous years, especially last year when we did have increased revenue, some of our expenses were in fact one-time improvements to the fiscal health of the county. I don't remember if it was $120,000, $140,000 that we allocated towards the reserves that we stipulated was one-time expense. That's almost our first payment, if you, if you think of the budget as a whole and our ability to work with the different pots here. So I don't think it's a stretch to make the next budget work, and I know it's been said in past years that the next year is going to have a tax increase because of us lowering the levy, and that hasn't happened. And I think it's premature to say what happened next year.
I would just say that we aren't budgeting like we did in past years anymore. That's completely different. We're on a new road. We have a new way of doing things, a new way of looking at it.
It is nice to recession. It's not nearly as severe as it used to be, that's for sure.
Just to give clarification, because to go to Mr. Clausen's question, I don't think that's in the letter or the memorandum of understanding. I think that unless you put it in the motion that you signify what the funding source is, you're talking about just the letter that lays out the issues and the memorandum of understanding.
Right, so the motion that I would make, and then you can correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, the motion I would make right now is to approve the memorandum of understanding as updated, authorizing the board chairman a sign, and approve the attached letter to the Ag Expo Board from the Board of Supervisors with the funding commitment...
See for signatures, a letter, yes.
Of $1.5 million from non-tax sources, which is gaming revenues over a period of 10 years or tax increment.
That's correct.
And I'll wait for a second.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion and a second as their discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask the auditor to call for a record roll call vote.
I'd love to vote for this. The money is not there. There's going to be a tax increase by doing this. We spent down our reserves. That's how the balance, budget's been balanced for the last couple of years, and I am going to keep going.
We have called the question, and it's improper to discuss it this time, if you'd please answer.
It may be, it may be improper, but thank goodness I'm not going to be here for the next budget year. No.
Yes.
Smith?
Aye.
Hung?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye, and the commitment to the Ag Expo Center is made on a four to one vote. Thank you all very much for your cooperation, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Next item on the agenda is consideration of Veterans Affairs, location and expansion, and payment of rent to Sioux Rivers region. We have a couple with us from the Veterans Affairs Commission, and I'm bringing forward this item. This is a carry-through from some discussion of last week, and so I won't reiterate all the points. I have not heard what the region has now said that they feel comfortable with as far as what they would like to charge the Woodbury County Veterans Affairs Department for being there without paying, which has become a recent source of frustration for them and for which they've had some legal counsel advising that we have to have the Veterans Affairs Department pay full market value. This came as a request. I had a request because July 1, we are going to have a new veteran service officer. That person cannot function without having a confidential space for these veterans who come in with post-traumatic stress disorder, who are needing assistance, and so on. Something has to be done. This board has to act. The region personnel occupy 74% of the building, Veterans Affairs 26%. When I asked the CEO, Shane Walter, what would be a way forward, he said, well, you need to start paying rent. And then you may be able to have a larger footprint for Veterans Affairs within that conference room. They have six employees, Veterans Affairs will have four employees, and so I need to move this issue off of dead center. So I am recommending we consider a funding level. I looked at fair market value and what that may be, and so I'm putting this on the agenda at $2,400 from Veterans Affairs and Assistance monthly, and would make a motion to, to move the Veterans Affairs pay $2,400 from Assistance each month and have a subsequent budget amendment. And I will, I will make some subsequent motions pending this one.
Uh...
I'm waiting for a second before we have the discussion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Clausen?
What happened at the region today?
Mr. Clausen is asking, is there anyone who attended the region meeting?
Yes, today.
Was there any discussion? I saw this on the agenda, but I didn't hear if there was any.
The discussion basically was, they were going to pass a motion to make us pay rent, which I voted against. They thought $1,600 to $2,400 a month was fair, and they think they own the building.
My name's Leon Coster. I'm the Chair of the Woodbury County Commission of Veterans Affairs. I have a question relative to the, to the funding of this rent. Am I correct in understanding that it's coming from the Assistance portion of our budget?
That was what the motion was.
The, I guess I have a concern about that. The Assistance portion of the budget is for veterans who are in need of emergency assistance. We have guidelines, income guidelines, and expenditure guidelines for that. We don't know what that's going to be. There's a history of it, and I'm sure you have that history of what that is. And I guess I want to make sure that when veterans come to us and have that need and they meet our guidelines for that assistance, that there'll be money there to provide that assistance to our veterans. That's my, that's my concern. And if, and if the, and if the rent payment comes out of Assistance, if that, I don't want that to negatively jeopardize that assistance to veterans.
I absolutely agree with that. That's why I'm not going to vote for this, because I, I don't think we should look at any vote that will cut Assistance to veterans. So I think you go back to the drawing board and, and I don't know what, but that just seems terrible to me that that would be taken out of that. And as the, if we were to increase that funding, I'm not sure at this point in time where we would get the money other than reserves.
Yes.
There has to be a funding source. It will either come from Veterans Assistance, it will come from Reserves, or it will come via a budget amendment. So if someone would like to offer a friendly amendment to, to that, to say that it will come from Reserves, I'd be open to that.
I just want to clarify something. Gene, what budgets do, they have an administrative budget, right?
Yes.
And the other is the, then you have General Leave Budget. And what would occur, I mean, what should occur, is that you add a rental line item agreement, line item to the administration budget. And then, as far as where it's funded from, I mean, they've always dealt with the budget amendments when you run low on Assistance. But the, but where it should, in order for the budget to be accurate and transparent, is that it should be in, just add the line item of rental to the administrative budget.
And then that would ultimately come out of, if we had to do a budget amendment, it would come out of Reserves?
Right.
Are you offering that amendment?
I'm not, because I think my friendly amendment would be to renegotiate the lease rate. I don't even know if you're at the point to know what you have to pay for rent, and maybe with some goodwill, that can be reduced in half. That, that's what my friendly amendment is.
I asked Jim Louch for, I asked Jim Louch for a number, and the only number I got back was, well, $1,600 sounds like it'd be reasonable.
It's my understanding that at the meeting today, that they asked for a meeting with you and Mark Monson, with the region, to iron this thing out, to see...
They asked for this county board to go to the region and meet with them.
It wasn't just yourself and Jeremy?
Pardon?
It just wasn't you and Jeremy?
No. You said the board.
I would be willing to do that.
I'd be willing to do that, too, because they do not know what expansion the region's going to have there. They don't know how much...
Why do you know so much about this, Larry?
I, you know, I get around.
Well, yeah, we know where you're getting it. Okay.
Well, I should be getting it from you.
Well, I'm not getting it from the right person. There's no communication whatsoever.
Pardon me?
There's no communication whatsoever with Sioux Rivers.
Well, I, didn't they ask for a meeting with this board, or with you and Jeremy, today?
They asked for a meeting of this board at their meeting.
And...
Wait a minute, we're on another topic here.
Let me just clarify something. I have been in discussions for three and a half weeks, back and forth, asking, the region hired an attorney to say pay fair market value. I asked, excuse me, I asked, what is fair market value? This isn't rocket science. I went out on Hamilton Boulevard and I started doing some estimates on, and called a couple of realtors and found out what fair market value is. It's not rocket science, come on. It's $1,600 to $2,400 right off of Hamilton Boulevard. Everybody knows that that's fair market value. It's not a surprise. I asked Jim Louch, I asked Shane Walter, can you guys please help us? Because you know what I'm sick and tired of? I'm sick and tired of our veterans being yanked around. I'm sick and tired of these folks having to eat lunch in their cars because they can't use the conference room. I'm sick and tired of us having a service officer that's going to come on July 1, that's going to have to counsel out of his car. This issue will be moved off of dead center tonight. And whether it comes from Assistance, I don't think that's right, but it's got to come from somewhere. Jim Louch, $1,600 sounds good to me. Now they say, well, we've got to meet with the full board. Come on.
Jeremy, you know, never, since you've been on the board, have you recognized the region?
Oh, I recognize them, trust me.
But you don't want to deal with them, you want to dictate to them.
That's not true.
And that's not the way you do business. You said they hired an attorney. It's an attorney for the region. The Woodbury County can use him as well as anybody else.
Oh, no, oh, no.
Wait a minute, the only one that's hired an attorney is Woodbury County.
That's blatantly false, you know it.
No, that is not...
Yes, it is.
Attorney.
Pardon me?
Paul Lundberg is the region attorney.
That's correct.
So why, how can you just make a statement that says, we're the only ones that have hired attorney? I say, the region hired an attorney, and you...
No, no. We're part of the region. Lundberg is your attorney, is... Lundberg is your attorney as well.
No.
No, he's not. We can't... Because they are not representing the interests of Woodbury County. Case in point, you got a new veteran service officer? We really don't care about the space. You have 5,600 square foot out there, and the fact that we need a space...
Don't bring the veterans into this.
Oh, because it doesn't affect them.
The only veteran sitting on this board is myself.
Oh, I beg to differ, sir.
You might be in the service, but you're not out of it yet. I don't know if that makes him a veteran or not.
Oh, please.
What's your problem?
Please.
I mean, this board is deteriorating to the point where you can't discuss anything reasonably. You've got a region, you have to deal with them. Why not meet with them if that's their request? Instead of telling them, this is what we're going to do.
I have never had a request.
You had one today.
I don't have any interest in meeting with them as a full board.
Well, and apparently we wouldn't be there unless I brought it up.
It was coming up at committee reports.
We're acting on this now.
When does the new service officer come on, Mr. Claussen?
I believe July 1st, but I'm not sure of that.
Where do you expect him to counsel?
If it has to be in the courthouse, fine. If it has to be at Trosper Hoyt, the LEC, we've got room to put him. But because we've got this position...
You can see where we're going. And you know what? We're going to vote on this tonight because we're going to make sure...
That's great if you walk in with the three votes.
We're going to vote on this tonight because you folks deserve a heck of a lot better than this board has been giving you.
And now you're bringing the veterans into it, and they have no part in this discussion.
Yes, absolutely, please.
Chairman Taylor, did you serve in the Armed Forces?
Yes, I did.
He is a veteran.
Apart from my family for over a year.
He's still in the service.
Regardless if you are on active duty, inactive reserve...
Okay, that's fine.
If you've served for your country, you are a veteran for your entire life.
And that's fine.
Until you die. You get a flag on your casket. And my thought was with the Sioux Rivers Region, couldn't they, if they gave the veterans the space, couldn't they have it as a tax write-off? And they're contributing to their country, to the veterans. You would think they would want to give them that space.
You would think every supervisor up here would.
You also have to realize...Leon, how long have you been on the board? How long have you been on the Veterans Board?
I've been on the board for five years.
Twelve years.
You were on when we...no, you weren't.
Yeah, I was on when we were up here.
Okay. And when we came up with the space for the Veterans Affairs Department to move in, there was never...as I remember the conversation with John Priestley, there was never any room for expansion there because the place was full with mental health personnel. And we're in that same situation again. We don't know what's going to happen with mental health.
We don't...
No, you're not. It's an empty building nearly. Right, that's so obvious.
That's...the discussion is ongoing with the state now that they are talking about kicking case management back to the county.
No, they're not. They can discuss it all they want. They have two-year contract, Larry. Are they going to cancel all the contracts and fire all those people? No.
Well, I don't know about that.
I do.
Auditor Gill, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Because I saw that lonely look in your eye, like you wanted to be a part of the discussion. Can I withdraw the motion for $2,400 from Assistance? I have the right to do that, correct?
You can ask for permission. Once a motion has been made and seconded, it is in the possession of the body. You can ask for the ability to remove it before the...from the body if there is no objection.
May I have permission to remove the motion from the body if there's no objection? Hearing none.
I would remove my second.
Okay. Hearing none, I would at this time move that the Veterans Affairs Department pay rent in the amount of $1,600 for the suggestion of Jim Louch from Sioux Rivers Region.
Mark Louch.
That was his suggestion.
$1,600 without specifying a funding source. And let that stand. May I have a second if there's one to be had?
I won't second it.
What's that?
I will not second it.
Is there a second to be had on that motion? Nobody's comfortable with $1,600. I would move $1,000.
I would move that this...
There's a motion on the table.
No, that was withdrawn, or it never was seconded.
I said I'd move $1,000.
Mr. Chairman, can someone else make a motion beside yourself?
After this first one is...
Go ahead.
I'd move $1,000. $1,000, do I hear a second? Hearing no second, we're now at $1,000, yes.
I would move that you get in contact with the region and set up a joint meeting so that we can iron this out. And that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'm going to second it because I still think we can renegotiate this. To...I mean, when we had...and this is my question for PJ. When we rent...had the cafeteria down here, we rented it for $1 a year to a nonprofit. We did not have to abide by fair market value. Now, is Veterans Affairs a nonprofit? So I'm not sure the whole argument on having to do fair market value is even right. So why should we go out and offer anything close to fair market value when I feel that if I could go up there and talk to the region, and we can all go up there and talk to the region, maybe we can get somewhere? Because I do not want to take this out of reserves. We're...you know, we put money into reserves. 10 to 1, most have money that's never going to make it in reserves because it's going to be eaten up by all the stuff that's coming up last minute. I do not want to take it out of benefits either. So the only reasonable approach, gentlemen, is to go back and try this again and come out with something fair for both parties because this isn't.
I don't see the other side being fair about any of this.
You know, I haven't been there. I do not know. I would like a chance to go up there. When I worked with these, with the region, it seemed very reasonable to me. I do not know what has happened there. It just boggles my mind that this is how it's...
Boggles my mind, too.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to renegotiate. I would ask that you'd resist the motion. I've been trying to do that for the last three and a half weeks. I've never seen anything slow-rolled so much. We are to the point where your veteran service officer's been told, "Go to Trosper Hoyt, put him in the courthouse." Unacceptable to negotiate, which means continue not meeting the needs of Veterans Affairs. Would the auditor please call the rule? The motion is to renegotiate with the region, with the entire board. Is that your motion, Mr. Claussen?
No. My motion was for this board to set up a meeting with the region and talk to them.
That's the motion.
Okay. A joint...
What the goal of ironing out this issue, though, right?
Well, this issue would be what would be discussed.
Has it been seconded?
Yep.
Yes.
Do we have a motion and a second?
I would just point out that the region is in the process of scheduling public input meetings with each county. And that would be an opportunity for this to happen anyway.
Well, this would just make it happen quicker.
And I would urge the body to vote against this motion.
You know, I'm...
Roll call.
Why?
Because I'm going to tell you why. The boost program up at Trosper Hoyt was... We had individuals who were taken up there and shown around. And you know what they were charged? $1. And now you have your own Veterans Affairs Department, and we can't make a motion to put $1 and to expand into a space that's nearly entirely empty, which is a motion that I plan to make right after this so that you folks can get your veteran service officer on board and you can have that proper space. That building is nearly empty on the other side. Everybody knows it. Everybody knows what the right thing to do is on behalf of your board. And that's what I plan to do.
That's why we need to go back to the table because I believe the whole region knows the right thing to do.
Let's start with, who owns the building?
More than ego.
Mr. County Attorney.
It is not. A dollar for the boost program up at Trosper Hoyt, which you all showed, Rita DeYoung, here's the space that you can rent for a dollar you won't do for the Veterans Affairs Department? It's shameful. Let's vote.
What's shameful is you keep using Veterans Affairs...
Come on.
As a whipping boy, where there's nobody here...
Mr. Gill.
That has anything against the veterans. I was instrumental in putting them out there, getting them out of a 12-by-12 room.
And not wanting any rent at the time.
That's got nothing to do with this, Jeremy. It's...I'm of the opinion, and I would have PJ, you know, if he wants to research it, whatever, that that building is owned by the region now. It's titled in Woodbury County's name.
John Switman has said more than five times that it's under the disposition. And each time you allude to him, he tells you the same thing. And then you say, well, let's ask him again.
You can get an attorney, never mind. Jeremy, it's not worth arguing with you.
Will you please call the rule, Mr. Auditor?
And the motion is to set a joint meeting. Claussen?
Aye.
Monson?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Um?
Taylor?
No, and the motion fails, 2 to 3. I would now move that $1 be paid from Woodbury County to the region as rent authorize the Building Services Director to construct a window in the office for the new service officer in the present conference room and give a timeline when subsequent construction might take place to meet the needs of the region should a conference room for them prove necessary. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, will the auditor please call the rule?
Claussen?
I'm going to pass. I want to dignify this motion with a vote.
Is that a point of order, Mr. Auditor? Is that something when a member is present that a member may pass on a vote rather than voting aye or nay?
He has to pass his...only delaying his vote until all others have voted.
But he is required to vote, is he not?
He can...
Can you abstain?
You can abstain, but you have to have a reason and...
A no vote...his vote to not vote will be treated as a no vote.
No vote, correct.
Is that what you're choosing to raise?
I abstain.
Yes.
I had to think about how I was worded.
Smith?
No.
Um?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye. And the motion passes 3 to 2. I will plan on communicating to the region that we will make modifications to the building shortly. Please report to Director Danielle Dempster that we will start through our Building Services Director to make modifications in order to put your service officer in a place where you can serve veterans. Thank you very much for your service.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If the region would reject that, then what happens?
Then I don't know what the region is...
Does it go through...I mean, if they say no?
Nobody's asked permission.
Nobody's asked what?
Nobody's asked the region permission for what to do with this county building.
Even though it's not settled on whose control controls that building, you're just going to go ahead and do it without any consideration.
I think you've been advised by legal counsel that it's under the disposition of the county. Item number nine, Human Resources, Ed Gilwin. This is the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions.
Move it.
About a motion, is there a second? All second it, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion passes 5 to 0. Item number 10, planning and zoning, John Pellelo. This is a public hearing on approval of the third reading of zoning ordinance map amendment for Affordable Self-Storage LC regarding rezoning agricultural estates of the GIS parcel named in the agenda.
John Pellelo, Director of Planning and Zoning. This evening, we'd like you to hold the third public hearing regarding a zoning district map amendment related to an application filed by Mr. Kelly Pry, who's the controlling shareholder of an entity called Affordable Self-Storage, the property owner of the three acres in question. If you recall, this is a rezone requested in order to get a house built for a family member in close proximity to the similar zoning district called Agricultural Estates, which would allow the residential density in question of more than two residents per quarter-quarter section. The zoning commission's held a public hearing on this issue. As recommended to your board, you approve this rezoning. Staff would concur with that zoning commission recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Move it.
We've got to go out of hearing.
Yeah. We'll now hold a public hearing on this issue. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this particular zoning ordinance? Hearing none.
I move closed hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion passes 5 to 0. We will now move and vote to approve the third reading of the zoning ordinance map amendment.
Correct.
Move it.
I'm going to second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries 5 to 0.
I'd now like you to vote to approve ordinance amendment numbered 41, which was a copies in your packet, and I have the original here for signature, should you so approve.
I'll move that, and can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries 5 to 0. John, stellar presentation as always. Thank you very much.
If we could get a single copy executed by each supervisor, and then we'll go to your auditor for his attestation, and you will record, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Item number 11 is an exciting one, and it's the approval of awarding comprehensive planning project bid to Simmering Quarry Incorporated and our Economic Development Director, David Gleiser.
You're looking much better.
Thank you, I feel a lot better. David Gleiser, role Economic Development Director, just here this evening to present the board with a recommendation for the approval of an award to one of the firms that have submitted bids for our comprehensive planning project. You'll recall that we received five bids for this project to provide for individual comprehensive plans comprehensive plans for 11 rural cities in Woodbury County. After analyzing the bids myself along with members of the RFP Review Committee, the recommendation being brought forth tonight is to award the project to Simmering and Quarry Incorporated for their proposal of services in the amount of $112,530. And just so you know, this proposal was selected due to the fact that it really exceeded our expectations for planning services by providing for all of the required sections that were listed in the RFP itself, as well as for offering some additional key elements in the planning design, and those specifically were partnering with the engineering firm INS Group for preliminary opinions of probable costs for infrastructure and utility work within each of these individual plans, as well as including a community imaging and marketing component, and building in a one-year follow-up with each individual community post-completion of their respective comprehensive plan to update and revise the document accordingly. So, both Simmering and Quarry and INS Group come highly recommended through all of the references that they provided within their proposal, and I'd also just like to mention the fact that INS Group is the resident city engineer for five of our rural cities, and Simmering and Quarry and INS Group both have a number of recent and current planning and design projects within Woodbury County. So, they're familiar with the landscape, with the communities, with the stakeholder groups, and so for those reasons, I'd like to make that recommendation to approve.
Move it.
Project. I'd second it. Is there discussion?
I would say, I got to sit in on the process, and David had very rigorous breakdown of how to score these companies, and it was very clear when it was all done, who was standing way tall.
Yeah.
It was very clear.
I compliment you on the same. Do you have, or do the supervisors, will they be provided kind of an overview from Simmering Quarry as far as the details and what they put forward? Do they have that at this point?
In terms of a contract proposal?
Right, and/or their presentation of materials, does everyone have that?
I don't believe the supervisors have had access to the proposals themselves, but I can make them available, and I guess what I would like to do is, with this motion would be for the board to approve or allow county staff, specifically myself, the finance controller in collaboration with the county attorney's office, to work with the firm and come back in a week with a proposed contract for review, which would allow you an additional week to review the bid.
Very good. We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
And the motion carries four to one. Next item is consideration of financial support to Mowville, Salix, and Sergeant Bluff for planning services.
So, this is a follow-up request on behalf of the Rural Woodbury County Development Committee, which brought forth a recommendation to this board back in March, and that was for the consideration to provide a like-dollar amount to the cities of Mowville, Salix, and Sergeant Bluff that will be comparable to what the other cities are gonna be benefiting from, of those that participate in the comprehensive planning project that we just approved. So, the breakdown for the 11 cities in the comp plan project with Simmering and Quarry was $10,230, and that would be the recommendation to provide up to $10,230 to those three cities over the next, from July 1st until, I have it in here, oh, I'm sorry, from July 1st, 2016 to October 31st, 2019, which is the timeframe of what we're going to be spending dollars on with the other 11 cities for Simmering and Quarry.
David, is there any parameters, just to, are we just giving them the money, or?
It'd be, the use would be for planning services, planning and design, long-range planning, it could be for a housing study, and essentially would be for any sort of planning and design service related to promoting growth or development within the respective communities.
But they would have to.
Submit an invoice to us.
Submit an invoice, okay.
I believe they, Salix had an estimate on infrastructure planning of like $29,000, so this will help a great deal, but it's not gonna.
And the way I'm making the recommendation would be to provide up to $10,230 during this timeframe, so if, for example, they had a project that cost $4,000, they could submit that invoice and then bank the rest, and then if, you know, if they don't spend it, then they, then I guess you kind of, you lose it, but at least we make that opportunity available, so it's equitable, and we're providing long-range planning services for all 14 rural communities in that respect.
I think this is a good even-handed approach to the whole, to all communities. The few that have already taken this initiative, I think, should receive some sort of, for lack of a better term, reward for their forward planning that the county is willing to undertake for the, for all these towns, and, and I would go so far as to say, if there's a project identified by the existing comprehensive plan, I would be okay spending funds for that, but I, you know, I do compliment the, your recommendation here, I think it's a good step.
So, with that, are you wanting to make a motion to say that it either needs to be planning or something identified within the, the planning that can be, this money can be used for or allocated for from local option sales tax?
Yes.
Salix was left off the agenda.
The agenda was republished.
I was corrected.
Matthew, will you say that again?
Sure. So, the motion to provide up to $10,230 of local option sales tax funds for each city is noted during the period for comprehensive planning, for additional comprehensive plans or projects identified under the existing comprehensive plan.
So, what are you thinking of before voting, like a project, because that's changing the whole scope of, I mean, if you're gonna start funding projects, that's, then, then the other cities will say, well, we didn't get any projects funded, so I'm uncomfortable to take it out of the planning.
Well, except, Mowville and, who's the other one? Sergeant Bluff paid for their own plan.
I understand that.
And Salix got theirs for free through the University of Iowa. So, now Sergeant Bluff's sitting on a huge plan, which is gonna cost them a lot of money to develop.
And I, and I.
Same with Mowville.
I do understand what you're saying, but at the same time, if we, if we give this money for another type of, even if it's a, I don't know what you wanna call comprehensive plan plus, another type of plan, that's kind of something new just for those three, whereas if there's a project identified in the comprehensive plan, which is the point of these comprehensive plans is to identify and categorize projects, they would still submit the invoice to, to the county.
So, just, so I'm clear, so if, for example, Mowville, Sergeant Bluff, or Salix, within their existing comprehensive plan, had identified a project for extending infrastructure, this would allow them to expend those funds on that project to pay for construction of such services?
Yes, I'd personally be comfortable with that.
If they already have a comprehensive plan, they've got a list already.
I'd second that, and I think it sounds like the Sergeant Bluffs, well, the Sergeant Bluff of the world, will use it because they already have their eye on some planning dollars, but if there's not something that, you know, if Mowville doesn't have, we don't want people to plan for the sake of planning if they don't have something that's out there just to come up with these dollars, and I think if it's well thought out, which it should be if it's in their comprehensive plan, I don't see an issue. So, we have a motion and a second, is there discussion?
So, yes, who reviews the, the project that, I mean, and decides if it's worthy of the expenditure, is that you?
Would, I could, I could bring them back forth to the board.
I think that would be nice, I would like.
Dennis Butler and I could review the invoice or that's submitted to the board for payment, and then I can bring it back to the board, so that way there's transparency in.
Right.
The process.
Yeah, 'cause that's out of the scope of plan, it changes the parameters of it.
And then I, and then I would just add that, you know, we've had budgeted previously $110,000 in local option sales tax to fund the comprehensive planning project, but, so what I'll do is I'll submit an agenda item for next week to amend that to be approximately the equivalent to what it would pay for 14 of these cities at $10,230.
Yep.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, at this time, we should vote on it, because we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
And the motion carries four to one. We are now to item number 12, secondary roads. Mark Nara is out, but we have Ben over with us tonight. How are you, Ben?
Ben, you did a great job last night.
Yeah, thank you very much. Well, you know, I kinda enjoy that, and I think you had all left, and so I spent upon another half hour with a number of individuals, we talked about gravel for some time, I don't think we got an answer to their justification, but I think they kind of see where the county's coming from, and there's no magic potion that's gonna fix the soils of Woodbury County and make perfect roads, and so.
Well, thanks for being there, appreciate it.
No problem.
You have your first item, nice consideration of a permit for use of the county right-of-way for an underground utility.
This is to bore through L. 25 and 110th Street.
I'd move it if there's a second.
Right.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. Item B is receiving consider quotations for two pickup trucks.
We'll see, I have to open these up. You have to bear with me, I'm not sure if they put them together, or... We have three bids, Berry Motors, Jensen, and Kneffler. We'll find out how they bid these, I'm not sure if they bid them together or as separate vehicles, we're replacing two Foreman's trucks, one out of Odo and one out of Hornick.
No, I think you need them, we need them both?
Yes. Yeah, one is for the Odo foreman, and one is for the Hornick. The first bids I've opened, I think I'm gonna read them both, one is for Hornick and one is for Odo, so we'll have to mark those in appropriately. And they have two, two bids for each, for each shed, for each Foreman, they're identical bids, so I'm gonna go ahead and read those. They have bid an XLT package and an XL package. The XLT package is $33,460, less a trade-in of $6,600, for a net purchase price of $26,860.
Is that Berry Motors?
That is Jensen.
Do those again.
A purchase price of $33,460, with a trade-in of $6,600, for a net purchase price of $26,860.
That's for two?
That is for one, but it's a duplicate bid.
You can buy a BMW for that.
Yeah, well. So, they bid the same thing for the Hornick, so if you wanna write that in on the Hornick bid, it's a duplicate bid. Then they had a separate package, which is an XL, that purchase price is $30,084, $30,084, less a trade-in for that unit of $6,600, with a net purchase price of $23,484. Again, that is for both Foremans. Okay, the next bid is supplied by Kneffler. So, go back to your phone. And basically, they've done the same thing, they've bid one package for both Foreman's vehicles, and they're identical prices. So, for a purchase price of $33,699, less a trade-in of $6,300, for a net purchase price of $27,399, and that is for both trade-ins at both sheds. Just wanna make sure there's not an alternate. There's two vehicles. Not seen one. Everyone's them, I don't care, I'm done. Third one in final is from Berry Motors. Okay, he has supplied two different, two different trade-ins. The first one is for the Odo, the Odo shed, and that is a purchase price of $36,874, with less a trade of $6,300, for a net purchase price of $30,574, $30,574. And the Hornick shed purchase price is $36,874, with a net trade of $7,500, with a net purchase price of $29,374. So, recommendation would be that you send these back to the county engineer for his review and recommendation.
Move it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and they, on a vote of five to zero, they're coming back to you.
Yep, we'll put them on the agenda for next to you.
Okay, great. Item 12C is consideration of approval of a contract for gravel project, GH 2016-2 Road Hall.
This is to put 40, 40 mile, or four different districts, about 40 miles, 10 miles per district, directly to the road, we've seen some good success with this, we talked about this a little bit last night.
I'd move it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. He's back to you here, item number 13 is a consideration of a resolution to set the interest rate for drainage warrants.
Wolf Creek, yes, I think this is an annual thing that Mark wanted to do, set the interest rates, so last year it was 5%, I believe.
So, what, what's, set at what?
5% for the warrants where there's not enough money in the account to pay the bills, the interest gains on the, yeah.
That's pretty healthy, considering what you get in the bag.
Yeah, that, I think they make it... I'm only the messenger today.
Can we change it?
You're the board, you're acting as the Wolf Creek Drainage Board. I believe last year it was 5%, and I had heard that some people had suggested even a higher rate, because sometimes you have to sit on for a number of years, but.
Jean, did you check with the treasurer?
I did talk to Ben Clayton, Ben and I kinda talked about this, and the board did approve last year the 5% on the drainage warrants, and I think this is just an annual thing, and that's why Mark left it this year, so it usually is higher than the base.
I'll move it. Good, a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. We will now recess, thank you very much, and again, thank you for last night.
I enjoyed it.
Yeah, great, thank you, we'll keep inviting you then. We'll recess the board of supervisors meeting and convene the Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting. Item number 14 is approval of the June 21st, 2016 minutes.
Move it.
All second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Now, we're gonna adjourn the Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting and continue the board of supervisors meeting, Siouxland District Health. Well, it was either sent through the purgatorio and that's reading, or come to the board of supervisors meeting and be placed last, or second to last on the agenda. So, Tyler Brock, fairly simple, but you were asking to authorize a chairman-assigned change order number three to Siouxland District Health remodel with Sioux contractors.
Yeah, not a lot of extra information here, but just as we're finishing up the project, there were four different items that came up that were not in the original contract. There was an exhaust fan from one of our exam rooms that had to be disconnected and moved, we had to move a fire alarm pull station, we had to move a couple of designated outlets for our vaccine refrigerators. And we also had, in our electrical inspection, there was, the inspector wanted us to track, trace, and label our electrical panel, and these are just some of the costs that were associated with these extra, extra items. The total is $1,930 is what the total for these four items are.
Move it.
Second, is there discussion? At some point, and we brought this up at the department head meeting, but if you just share this with the full board, you'll have a ribbon-cutting celebration.
Yeah, I believe Kevin has already been in discussions about that, I'm not sure exactly when that's gonna happen, but it sounds like it is. Yeah, the work is done, so it's just now it's a matter of getting people moved in and starting the new processes that this brings us.
The windows look good from the street, so... A little natural daylight, too, so, very good. I'll sign this quickly, and then you can be on your way. Thank you very much, Tyler, appreciate it. We are now at item number 16, the county treasurer, Mike Clayton, approval of resolution naming depositories.
Move it.
Second, for signatures.
We have a motion and a second, I will pass this around. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Chairman's report, department head agenda went out, we had a good meeting, covered some human resources topics at length, FMLA, True Speak, and other initiatives. One of the things that came out of that department head meeting that I thought was key is that there was a distribution of potential changes to policy that Human Resources has identified. And my recommendation is that that go through the Policy Review Committee, which Supervisor Ung is coming up on...
July 27th.
That was good, right off the top of your head, July 27th. And so if you look at those identified potential reviews, I think that way it'll be reviewed by our county attorney, auditor, and if any department heads or supervisors would like to attend that, that may be an opportunity to work through some of those protracted issues that is part and parcel of committee work. Moving on to Human Resources, BLR Learning. Ed Gilliland, Melissa Thomas and I had a discussion on some more robust training modules that would be akin to what John Malloy and WCICC put out that we did with the cybersecurity, if everybody remembers going through that kind of training. And so there are some great modules regarding anything from safety to HIPAA to, it's vast. I mean, even things that, for example, secondary roads and so on. So I just kind of put a little summation in the packet. Ed, do you want to briefly touch on this?
Just briefly, I had the opportunity to review more of the different courses that are available, all very professionally done. And we also have looked at a couple of other potential vendors. The other vendors started substantially higher, and they had more add-on costs as you went through. So they look to be a very good vendor. We do have money left over in this year's budget. So we've got more than ample money to cover the budget. I believe we can cover three years' worth of training for this. What it does is it gives you that computer training that is coordinated by the fact that you have to view each slide, you have to listen to the entire presentation before you can move to the next slide. There are questions that are asked during the course of the, during, as you're walking through the course, there are various questions that are asked, and you have to be able to answer them correctly before you can move on to the next one. And as Jeremy said, they cover everything from customer service to workplace safety to harassment.
Even lockout, tag-out, asbestos mitigation, and things that would fall under a specific department, like building services?
Absolutely, yes, bloodborne pathogens, the whole, whole range.
And so this isn't before the board tonight, but I just wanted to apprise everybody that we'd had this discussion. And there are some alternatives in pricing, and just wanted to let you know that this could be something that would be coming before the board in the near future.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions for Ed on anything? And finally, thank you, Ed. C is Interstate Justification Report, I just included the agenda for your perusal. This was the initial re-kicking off, and there was a technical committee that was held that same day afterwards. And there are the agenda items there, and there will be discussion eventually with landowners and a public meeting that will take place thereafter in order to get some consultation with those who may be affected parties. So I thought I'd put that in front of you. 18, reports on committee meetings.
Well, last night when we were at, in Odo, there was a zoning commission, so John just gave me an update here. I'll just report out. The zoning commission voted to recommend approval of earth and borrow operations at two sites, along Old Highway 141, south of Sioux City. The first one is near 210th and Old Highway 141. The second one is near 280th and Old Highway 141. Second one's for a Woodbury County Bridge project. And the first one is for a housing project. So it will go to the Board of Adjustments meeting for, to be voted up or down on July 11th.
Sounds like things aren't getting any slower. Thank you very much. Other committee meeting reports. Hearing none, item 19, citizen concerns, are there any citizen concerns?
Last but not least. It's the time of year that we need to renew the food service contract for juvenile detention. And we will be in our third year of just adding an addendum to where we continue and we just go with the CPI increase. We don't have to do an RFP, we don't have to put it out for bid. CBM is the only one that usually bids anyway. So this year, the CPI index was 2.9%, where it increased our meals, meal costs by 16 cents. So now the per meal cost will be $5.38. And then the additional costs that would be, would be just extras that aren't covered under the food contract. Like, we have snacks, we buy those in bulk, so that we don't have to pay a per-person price. And so that's it, and all I need is your signature. I've been approved by the state, the contract's been approved. I have Shane's signature from CBM in Sioux Falls, and we're all ready to go for another year.
Is that something that we can go ahead and do, typical standard practices?
Yeah, it doesn't need a vote, it's already a vote.
It's been past practice that this, we just come in for a signature and...
Okay, great.
And then, well, you need a copy, because it was 2013, was the original contract? So you want the original, and then my... I'll get those for you.
Need almost like a selfie stick for that. Sure, thank you. Any other citizens who are concerned? Hearing none, board concerns and comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Do we have substance abuse claims that are out?
Substance abuse claims, I need, I guess, some more...
Background.
Some more background, and...
We have substance abuse claims that we actually paid or will be paying tomorrow. They were about, I think, $38,000. The initial $17,000 that the Sioux regions paid, we are not reimbursing them, was our direction from the county attorney's office. But the other payments will go out hopefully tomorrow. That's correct.
Thank you.
Other board concerns and comments? Hearing none, let's adjourn.